Are you home, Jack?
Hey Phil, we're here. We can hear you.
Great, thanks. Appreciate you hooking me up.
Sure. You can hear us, okay?
Yeah, loud and clear.
Great.
Over.
All right, great. We'll call the Wednesday, March 19th, 2025, meeting of the Planning Commission, Foster City Planning Commission to order. Mr. Trainer, will you call the roll, please?
Sure, Madam Chair. Mr. Polinsky? Chair Colmont?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Ms. Friedlander?
Here.
Mr. Krawinski?
Here.
Thank you. We have quorum.
And we have one Commissioner who would like to participate remotely. Do we have somebody who can read the motion for electronic participation?
I'd like to make a motion for electronic participation by Planning Commissioner Duncan. Mr. Duncan, could you identify your location and the reason for participation by electronic means?
Surely, I am in Knoxville, Tennessee, down here on Family Business.
I move that Planning Commissioner Duncan approve electronic, or I, I move that the Planning Commission approved electronic participation by Commissioner Duncan in this meeting for personal reasons pursuant to the Planning Commission's policy for remote participation in Planning Commission meetings as adopted on February 5th, 2025.
Second. All in, we have to do a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Polinsky?
Aye.
Mr. Chair Colmont?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Friedlander?
Yes.
Mr. Krawinski?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes.
Okay, great. Welcome, Mr. Duncan.
Thank you all.
All right, so the next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Any, it's a pre-lit agenda. I don't know that anybody's going to have any specific changes in mind, but if you do, speak now.
I move that we adopt the agenda as stated.
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, our next item is a speaker series, none tonight. So, our next item is the receipt of petitions. Mr. Trainer, can you give us a summary of written correspondence, please?
Happy to, Madam Chair. We received one note from Paloma Benieto and their neighbors on South Lee Street regarding a potential rezoning of property on South Lee Street. No formal application has been submitted, so be on the lookout for more updates on that. The Commission also received a note from Andrew Allison, writing with notes and thoughts and analysis on recent crash data in the city. And that's, that's the summary of written correspondence.
Great, thank you. Do we have any in-person petitions tonight?
I've not received any speaker slips. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak tonight, make yourself known.
No. Okay, I think we can move on to our action items. Item 6A is the Quinn Site Plan Final Action. Mr. Zhang, would you like to introduce this item?
Yes, Madam Chair. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Henry Zhang. I'm the deputy, interim Deputy Planning Director. I'm here tonight filling for Mr. Garrett Fuller, who is out and sick. Yes, this is the Quinn's last public hearing, last Planning Commission's work session on this site plan was on February 5th. The applicant had worked very hard with the staff, addressed all the outstanding issues. I think I'm going to turn this over to Case Planner, Ms. Arseneau. Thank you.
Great, welcome, Ms. Arseneau. Thank you.
Thank you very much. My name is Laura Arseneau, and I'm the Case Planner for the Quinn and Homestretch Redevelopment Site Plan and Consolidation Application. I'm here tonight to present a brief summary, Planning Commission follow-up items and responses, responses and staff recommendations. The proposal is considered for final action tonight at Planning Commission. A description of the property begins on line 45 of the report. The 1.86 acre site is comprised of three existing parcels located at 350 and 360 South, South Washington Street and 303 South Maple Avenue. The recent legislative history of the site begins on line 64 of the staff report. On February 26th, 2024, City Council approved resolution approving two special exceptions, one for residential uses within a mixed-use development project and two to increase the building height with a bonus height of up to 40 feet. The approval included a 10-story senior living human care mixed-use building with 233 human care units, medical office use with retail, restaurant, and nonprofit uses as well. The approved SD proposal also included a partially underground parking garage. With this application, with the site plan application, the applicant has submitted a request for 13 minor deviations from the approved special exception as detailed starting on line 77 of the staff report. Such requests are reviewed by the city manager and they may approve minor, manager may approve minor deviations if they are determined to be necessary to reasonably achieve the construction of the project, to improve the project's overall functioning or benefit of the city, and they do not conflict with the approved voluntary concessions. The minor deviations include relocation of the lobby to South Maple Avenue, relocation of the loading and trash area to South Washington Street, building footprint modifications, architectural modifications, an increase in retail and medical office space, modifications to grading and streetscape, to amend the South Maple Avenue sidewalk paving materials, to modify the requirement for interior loading, trash, and recycling activities, and to modify the design of the garage and loading doors facing South Washington Street. The city manager has reviewed and approved the requested minor deviations, 1 through 11. The city does not support minor deviation request 12, which was the loading activities, and 13, which is the garage door, garage door design, as they are not in conformance with and directly contradict the voluntary concessions. With the site plan proposal, the applicant has requested three waivers. The description of these begin on line 54 of the report. There's a waiver for the required loading spaces, a waiver for the modification of the required parking with a proposed reduction of 46.3%, a waiver of the 100-foot distance from a vehicular commercial entrance or exit to residential district. Staff recommends the Planning Commission waive these three modifications. Since the February 5th work session, the applicant has worked with staff to address the following Planning Commission comments, which start on line 19 of the staff report. For sanitary sewer, city staff has reviewed and concurred that sanitary sewer proposed infrastructure is adequate for the Quinn and also future development. Staff has received confirmation from Arlington County. They have enough sanitary sewer capacity for the Quinn proposal. Further, per voluntary concession number 35, the city manager has reconfirmed the city's desire for the project to connect and pump to Arlington County. For transportation, the applicant has modified the language and striping, I'm sorry, the signage and striping of the bike lane on South Maple Avenue, has updated the parking management plan to provide employee amenities, bike infrastructure, and EV charging information, and has provided clarification of the pedestrian route from South Washington Street through the Basseo to the lobby elevators. For architecture, the applicant has provided a rendering of the building at dusk, and the information has been provided on bird-friendly building design and the rooftop amenity area. Lastly, the applicant has provided a comprehensive sign plan, which includes wayfinding, parking, drop-off, loading, and eternal signage, and an inclusion of predatory towing signage. Staff requests additional public parking and park identification signage be placed at the southern entrance of Rolling Road Park. Boards and commissions continue to review the proposal since the last Planning Commission work session. These comments start on line 654 of the report. Another architectural advisory board meeting was tentatively scheduled on February 12th, but the AAB did not have a quorum, and therefore no AAB comments were received on the third submission. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Board met on March 12th, 2025, to review the site plan proposal. The board requested that the identification signage for the park not duplicate other city park signage to allow this park to have a unique distinct identity. For staff, staff has completed the review of the revised application materials and recommends that the Planning Commission approve the site plan and subdivision consolidation proposal, contingent upon the addition of a force main note added to the sanitary sewer plan, and that the applicant address the remaining DRC comments, including those related to the comprehensive sign plan. Next, the applicant will make a brief presentation followed by discussion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair and members of the Commission. Good evening. My name is Andrew Painter with Walsh Calucci, speaking tonight on behalf of the applicant. I am not going to take up everyone's time tonight. I agree with everything that staff has said. Not going to show a presentation this evening. I did want to recognize, however, our team members, including Paul Quinn. I want to thank Ed Henderson for coming out as well. But Andrew Teters, Matt Quinn, you know, the rest of our design team, we're all here, either in person or online. I think that the staff report speaks to, speaks for itself. This is our third appearance before the Planning Commission on the site plan that we've had over the last six months or so. We have solved many issues. We've refined our architecture. We have refined project details, and I think we've come to mutually agreeable resolutions on a host of items. Any outstanding issues that remain, staff is determined to be non-critical that can be resolved after, you know, after the site plan is approved. I do want to take a step back, though, and just say that our intention from the beginning really has been to deliver a project that can realize so many of the city's planning priorities and land use recommendations. And, you know, we are trying to develop a project that we can all be justifiably proud. Whether this commission knows it or not, even for the new members that have just joined, this body has had its thumbprint on this project for many, many months. And, you know, staff and the applicant agree that the project is ready for the vote. We are certainly ready to realize its promise and make this investment. I do want to thank Ms. Arseneau, Mr. Zhang, all of city staff, and this commission in getting to this point. It's been a Herculean effort. We've learned a lot, and the project is better for your input. So, thank you very much.
Great, thank you so much, Mr. Painter. Well, I think we can open it up to Planning Commissioner questions or comments.
I have a, I have a question for staff, please. So, I have a question for staff, and it is on the, on the motion for the sanitary sewer. It, it does say that the applicant will add a note on the site plan that the sanitary sewer force main arrangement needs to be approved before the as-built plan is submitted. And to me, an as-built is when it's a record document and its construction is complete. So, I most, it seems like it should be like an issue for construction because when you want that note to be approved before you go into construction or before you go into permit.
The goal of the note, oops, excuse me, the goal of the note is we get the as-built plan after construction is completed, usually towards the end of the process. So, you want it a little bit closer to earlier in the process is what you're requesting?
But, okay, I guess maybe I'm misunderstanding the intent of this note. Isn't it just to say that we're putting a force main and there's an arrangement with Arlington County to?
The intent of this is that we're asking the applicant to put a note in the site plan, and we're going to effectively go into an MOU with the applicant, and that's what we're asking the applicant is to put the MOU note on the site plan before the, and we're asking that the MOU be completed before the as-built is submitted.
Oh, the MOU?
Yes, the MOU is completely.
But it's not going to change the actual plan to?
Correct.
Do the force main. Okay, that's, I wasn't understanding that.
Correct.
Okay. Maybe it needs to be included in there. I'll look, I'll, I'll think about the wording of that. It doesn't seem very clear to me that that's, that we're looking for the MOU. We're just looking for a note on the site plan.
Almost seems like our role on this is kind of high level, just the, you know, approving the kind of the concept that the force main is going to be used and that we'll be connecting in with Arlington and that Arlington has said that's fine with them, that they have a sufficient capacity to accept this. There's really not much more we can do beyond that, I don't think.
I would think we would want that understanding from Arlington before we start construction on this project.
Is that contained in Mr. Shields' note that's in?
Yes.
Okay.
But there aren't, there aren't much more details as we haven't hammered out the details yet, but Mr. Shields' note requests that this note, which is why this is put in the staff report.
Which is dated today.
Yeah, correct.
Right, I did receive that this afternoon, so. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Just wondering, is there any more details that can be provided on the public amenity space on the rooftop?
I would defer to the applicant on that.
No other changes at this point in time from, from last, from our last appearance.
So, that's kind of TBD?
TBD, that's right. There's, there's built-in flexibility in both the site plan and in our voluntary concessions to allow, you know, a host of different uses that can go up there, but all have to work within the four corners of the approval documents.
Okay. Did have one other question. Since the minor deviations, what is it, 12 and 13, were not recommended to be accepted by staff, is that, is that acceptable to the, to the honor?
It is at this point in time, yes. If we want to, I mean, the only way to change those would be go back through a special exception amendment, which we are considering doing, but that is the proper, you know, vehicle to do it, and, you know, we'll be evaluating that post-approval of the site plan.
Okay. I guess I'll head.
Okay, anything from you?
Just a quick thing. I know you were mentioning, sorry, earlier that, like, there's two of us who are new to the board, and you guys have been through a lot of stuff. I think it sounds like there's a lot of first mover, not issues, but like, this is going to, we talked about this last time, like, this is the template for everybody else who's going to try and redevelop that section of Falls Church. So, I just want to say thanks for your cooperation and working with us and trying to figure out how to get the right answer, because I think this is, like, it's not the last place in Falls Church to get, like, to have this opportunity for doing these things. But like, in terms of, somebody else is going to look back at this and say, this is the Quinn project. I'm going to do it like that, right? Like, this is what's already been approved. This is what Falls Church is going for. So, I appreciate that. I did appreciate you guys adding the lighting or the evening lighting or nighttime lighting solution there. One thing, like, I don't think it's a stop-the-presence kind of thing, but one thing that might be, like, would be considered there is, like, based on the building that's in Founder's Row, that is the 55-plus building, all the lights are always off in the resident apartments relatively early at night. Just as you guys think about how that's going to get built out, like, the ground floor lighting to light up that area, otherwise it tends to look very dark at night and is intimidating, it can be intimidating to visitors and people who are coming to.
Yeah, thank you very much. We'll make, we'll keep that in mind as we move forward. Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Duncan is his hand up, Madam Chair.
Oh.
I know he's.
Can we recognize Mr. Duncan? Mr. Duncan, go ahead.
Thank you, thank, thank you. Just for the public record, can we go over what connections there are between issuance of COs and occupation of the ground floor with retail or community-based uses? Is there sequencing that we can tell the community that can expect that would be similar to what we did for Founder's Row 2, for instance, or some of the other buildings?
Yes, Commissioner Duncan, that is spelled out in the voluntary concessions. If I could just locate those real quick. I think, I believe 75% of the ground floor spaces must be leased prior to the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy for any of the CCF or continuing care uses. There are also requirements that a minimum of 50% of the storefront spaces be constructed to what's known as a warm white box or shell condition prior to the first certificate of occupancy as well. And then there has to be a minimum of 50% of the non-leased storefront facades completed also prior to the first certificate of occupancy. So, that is, and, okay, so, and prior to the first certificate of occupancy, 75% of the commercial space must be under an executed lease. So, those are all spelled out in Condition 17 of the voluntary concessions.
Good. Just want to make sure the public is aware of all that. One other question in the same vein, is there any specificity about what the covering of the ground floor spaces will look like during their construction or fit out or getting, getting them to the warm white shell process? Are we going to have, you know, approach that is used at Founder's Row or the approach that is used at Founder's 2?
I recall us doing that. I'd have to look more into the conditions, if you can give me a minute, but I, you know, obviously, we would not want to have just empty, you know, spaces and things like that, but I seem to recall that we discussed that during the, during the negotiations of the voluntary concessions, Commissioner.
Okay, all right. Just wanted that on the record. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Did we want to say anything first?
No questions for me, just looking forward to seeing this project move forward should it get approved.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Friedlander.
Thank you. I, I do have a question about the drop-off area. I know we talked in previous meetings about the main address, and, and first of all, I do want to say how much I appreciate all the work that has gone into making this project. I think it's been developed to a point that I think everybody should, really should be proud of it. It's got really great features and in a lot of challenges. Like, this team has been so responsive to our comments, I think more so than previous teams, and that I just think that in challenges, there's a ton of opportunities, and you guys are realizing those opportunities as you've developed this design, and I think it's really going to be a win-win for both the city and for the tenants of the building as well as the development team. But with that said, I do have a, and I appreciate move, like, part of that was moving that trash loading zone away from the more residential side of the site, and in doing that, it allowed that to be kind of the main entrance along, along South Maple. But what I'm concerned about is it looks like the bike lane is right up tight to that sidewalk, so maybe we can look at that site plan. And I, I know we talked in previous work sessions about the drop-off area being inside the garage, but I just think that a lot of Lyft and Uber drivers and taxis that aren't familiar with the address that they're going to are not going to know to go in there and do a three-point turn after they drop somebody off. And so, I'm a little bit concerned that that front entry might, that might become a drop-off zone and might impede that bike lane. So, but if you could kind of speak a little bit to that, and maybe I'm misreading the drawings because it was really hard to kind of see.
Yeah.
That's an old drawing.
Okay.
That is an old drawing.
I've got it. Let me, hey, Scott, let me, let me share my screen. Hang on for one second. Okay, that's the South Maple facade, the black and white, but if you want to do the...
I think.
There's the.
There we are.
Okay.
Yep.
So, is that red area that's between the sidewalk and the bike lane, what is that? Is that paved area or is that flat with the road so that it can become a drop-off kind of area so you're crossing over that bike lane to drop off? Like, maybe you could zoom in?
Yeah, that's level with the sidewalk, so there's the curb at the road, and then that's the brick amenity zone, kind of like the, you know, where the tree pits go, bike, electric scooter and all that stuff, benches potentially. So, it's flush with the sidewalk side, so that's part of that. So, a vehicle really would be, you know, on the road, not, it's not like a pull-off where it's level with the asphalt road. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it, it does. I just, I just was hoping that maybe there's a way to allow for a drop-off there because I just, I see, this is also a medical office building as well as retail, as well as, you know, mobility challenged people who are living up above, and so the people who live there are going to know where to go. I think it's really the people who are going to the medical office building or to the retail establishments that are just. just getting dropped off to meet someone who may be using a ride share that doesn't necessarily understand that they need to go into the garage to drop off and pick people up.
I don't know, Scott, I, I think, I mean, over time, I think it's gonna be fairly intuitive. There will be signage that's associated with this. I think also that the, the curb is probably going to be colored yellow, and there will be signage saying no parking along this area.
Yeah.
But, you know, this was, this is one of the things that we worked with staff on and the council on during the original special exception. We originally had three parking spaces located right along here, and it was asked that we return this space back to the pedestrian and get additional street trees in this area, and that's the reason why we took out the parking.
Yeah, no, I, I understand that. I was just hopeful that I was misinterpreting the plan. But other than that, I mean, I think, I think, you know, all the, all the, the other opportunities that you guys have found was like in regrading and, and making that more simple for, especially for mobility-challenged individuals who are gonna be navigating the site. I think everything that you've done in response to our concerns has, has really kind of helped the project develop and be a really great opportunity.
Thank you.
So I appreciate all of your guys' attention and just cooperation and, and wanting to make a good project and wanting to do something for the city. I mean, even including the Forest Main, that's a huge commitment. So, and I recognize that, so I really do appreciate that.
Thank you. It has been, as I mentioned, it's been a team effort. You know, since the landscape plan is up on the screen, I mean, Scott has done, I think, a yeoman's job along with Karen, that Walter Phillips, to sort of lay this out. I mean, so much of this project is on the outside of the building. That is what is gonna be the public interface that a lot of people that will never go in this building will experience. And this is really meant to be a center for the south, you know, the southern side of the city, and a place that we can all gather. And so, you know, to your point, I mean, the universal design elements on the exterior spaces have, have just been so, you know, so critical. And so I appreciate the comment.
Absolutely. And, and I do appreciate too just how the, the architecture has also been developed in playing with those relationships and the proportions of those glazing systems to really show the function inside without making it a flat box. It, I think it sets the bar for future developments in the area. So I, I really do appreciate the team, so thank you.
We do too. And yeah, hats off to Toigan and Marius, and, you know, for, for coming in, taking a look at it, finding some additional efficiencies, but just overall bringing a really good cohesive, you know, view to all four sides of this building. I think it reads really well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, any other questions, comments? Okay, well, I guess I will just add my own kudos to you all. I think this really has come a long way. I hope it will be a terrific example for this area and a catalyst for more reinvestment. I'm super thrilled for the amazing public park that you're delivering to the community, so thank you for all of the work that you've done on the project. There are no further questions? Would somebody like to make the motion? Is there an order that we should be making these motions in? Oh, I'm sorry.
I just, the comment beginning, I'm gonna blame Google, who says meeting starts in one minute, but I wanted to ask questions about the public.
Is this a public hearing?
They sent you a letter.
Sent you a letter, okay. Can you come up to the, to the mic?
Did you want to open it?
We can.
This is Dan Putziger, my mother owns 304 South Maple, building across the street, and I have four tenants living in that building who park on the street. There is no parking in the back for them. I've been getting letters from Ms. Underhill over the planning period, telling me the building's coming and all that, and we've discussed over email, parking, what provisions we made for parking for current residents. And there is discussion of parking in the documents that I've seen about X thousand dollars for creating permit something, something, something. But primary concern of the existing residents is going to be, will they be able to park their cars during construction and making sure that it isn't full of construction workers dropping parking, because there is no room on that street right now for the residents that have to park on the street. And second afterwards, that there is some solution to where the four spots are still there for my tenants, and that there are spots for the other buildings going down the street after that. I know it's been discussed, I was just wondering what you can tell me.
Yeah, I'm happy to chime in and would welcome staff's comments as well. So during the negotiation of the original special exception, we made a commitment to have a construction, traffic, and parking plan. So, you know, that would be, you know, where construction access is gonna occur. Construction vehicles have to be parked off-site, they are not to be parking in the neighborhood on streets.
Okay.
And then, as you had mentioned as well, we did agree to a $10,000 commitment to help enforce the residential permit parking district that already does exist on Shirley and Gibson Street. It's signed there today, but it's not enforced at all.
I have insight into the police department's enforcement of that myself, with an employee there. But the problematic part of that, and what we need to hear, and what was discussed from Ms. Underhill a while back, is that a two-hour parking limit isn't gonna work if people are coming into the restaurant and parking there when I have people coming home and trying to park. So the idea was, can you create a permit-only parking for the residents on that street and for Gibson and Shirley? Because you're gonna fill it up with restaurant parking.
Yeah.
And my people will not be able to come home to their houses.
Yeah, I can talk a little bit about this.
Go ahead, Mr. Putziger.
So I live behind Founder's Row 2, so we're having this exact same conversation about permit parking. Streets are public, right? Like, this is what we've heard from the city, right? Streets are public, so everything, there's no, until there is an official permit zone, that is, like, you're describing the thing that is probably, like, if there are two hour, if there's a two-hour permit zone, it becomes an enforcement, a question of enforcement. What I can say is that what the conversation we've had is post-construction. We're now going through the permitting process and the conversation around permitting. So I don't know if it's part of this, this particular piece of the discussion.
Yeah.
It's a city, a conversation with the city, like, they're, it sounds like they're offering the same concession that Mill Creek did for Founder's Row 2, which was the, the funding the permit, funding the enforcement of the permitting and creation of the, well, in our area, it was creation of a permitting zone, but here enforcement. So that's a conversation with DPW and the city.
Correct.
After.
I mean, there is this hard stop that says, yes, they can park there for two hours, go enjoy a meal, my person's coming home, will not be able to get in, go to their house.
Yes. That is, that, that is the challenge, right? Like, so that's the conversation.
But a solution is a good thing, too.
Yeah, I just, I don't think the solution is part of this particular piece. It's, I, I'm happy to also talk to you as.
That's my request.
Yeah, no, I get it.
It's a, it's a hard stop, people can't come home.
Yeah, we are, we, the people, the folks who live behind Founder's Row 2, the exact same situation, I'm happy to talk to you afterwards, but just advice, citizen to citizen about like what we call it.
I mean, I've, I've traveled to Adapus Morgan when I was a kid. I know what it's like.
Yeah.
Yeah, Ms. Arsenault, did you have something that you wanted to add?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. I was just gonna say, our planning department has a transportation group. Uh, sir, sir, our, our planning department has a transportation group, and going on what Mr. Polinsky said, you submit a, you submit, they do a study and start the permit process, and they would come out and put the permit, ah, sorry, I'm losing my words tonight, put the permit program together and then submit it for the neighborhood. So our, our office would do that. DPW and planning.
How do I get contact with you through emails? I'm getting?
Sure, yeah, yeah. Ms. Underhill would forward it to us, yes.
The hard stop is a two-hour parking, our apartments and his house into Adams Morgan.
They're, they're doing it with Founder's Row 2, 2 as well, right now, right behind it.
I can only imagine.
So it, it's, it's happening with the newer development, so this is not something that.
Okay, well, we're concerned, very fascinated as to the solution.
Sure. And Ms. Underhill can email me, or I can give you my card after, too, so I, we're aware. Thank you.
I think Mr., uh, thank you, Ms. Arsenault. Mr. Duncan raised and maybe, raised his hand, yes. Mr. Duncan, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Maybe we don't want to carry this on, but I'm just curious. So my understanding from what I heard is those residents of the quad do not have any parking except on-street? Is that right? That's, if that's true, that's.
I think that particular building, not all of the units.
Yeah, but that particular, that particular building has, when you rent there, you know that there is no designated parking for you on the property that you have to park on the street. Is that, is that right? If, if so, that's a little different than the situation on, down below on Founder's Row 2, on West Street, for instance, where I live, where most people have some kind of driveway that they can pull off to park in. Anyway, I, I guess this will be a discussion for later, but I'd just be curious to know how many places in town are rented with no provision for on-property parking at all.
It sounds like a good question to look into along the way. It looks like there is some parking for the first, I'm just on Google Maps, for the first, like, three units or so, but, um, yeah, between there. It's a good, a good thing to keep an eye on.
Okay, thanks.
Madam Chair, I have to, so, the voluntary concession talks about the $10,000 to go towards the establishment of a residential permit parking district. Now, there are signage, there is signage restricting to two hours or whatever it is on Gibson and Shirley Street, but it's not enforced today. The city controls curbside management and utilization because they are public streets. We don't have any control over it, but to Ms. Arsenault's point, I would imagine that once this money is in the kitty and they are able to start establishing it, they will probably reach out to neighbors and figure out what is the appropriate amount of time. If you can recall, the area in Lion Village that's right behind Clarendon started out about 15 years ago at about two-hour parking, but now it's basically 24-hour parking, because it's just so, you know, they're having such a problem with it. So. Except for the residents, that's right. But, but I'm sure that the city would probably do that investigation, you know, and then come up with a plan, and then have the appropriate signage.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Because I think for Winter, Winter Hill for a while, there was discussion of that type of a plan, you know, a resident parking plan. So I, I don't think it was ever achieved, but.
It is in place.
It is?
Yeah, in Winter Hill, it's overnight, resident only, starting at 9:00 PM, I think.
So maybe that's the precedent.
You have to get like hang tags, though, or stickers.
And each neighborhood is different, right?
Each neighborhood is different, yeah. I think there's a different rule in place for Lawton.
Yeah.
So, yeah, staff will look at the facts and, and do the research, and we'll be working with the neighbors. Thank you for, yeah, thank you very much for raising, raising the question. Okay. Is there any further discussion, questions? If not, does staff have a recommendation on the order that we should be doing the two motions in? Should we do the?
You can just do the, go ahead.
Yeah, for, for the record, this is Henry Zhang. Yes, I think first should be the subdivision.
The subdivision, yeah.
And then the site plan.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would somebody like to make the motion for the subdivision?
I can do that. So whereas the Planning Commission finds that the approval of the subdivision application meets all applicable requirements of Chapter 38 subdivision regulations, and whereas the proposed subdivision application is to consolidate the existing three parcels, and the final subdivision plat must be signed off by the Chair of the Planning Commission prior to recordation, and now therefore I move that the Planning Commission approve subdivision application munis 2023-0129 to consolidate the existing three parcels into one parcel contingent on administrative staff review requiring owner's signatures on the final subdivision plat.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, you had to close the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for the reminder, Mr. Zhang. We'll close the public hearing.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion? Do we have a second?
A second.
Mr. Trainer, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Yep. Mr. Polinsky?
Aye. Or yes, sorry.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Friedlander?
Yes.
Mr. Krevinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Chair Coleman?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion passes.
Thank you.
Point of order, I'm sorry.
Oh, thank you.
Was the public hearing officially opened, Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, just wanted to make sure. Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, we opened the public hearing and we have closed the public hearing.
Thank you.
Uh, would somebody like to make the motion for the site plan?
I'll make it.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I'm making a motion for the site plan application, whereas the Planning Commission finds that the approval of the site plan and related waivers and modifications meets all applicable requirements of Division 7 site plans, including Section 48-1141 of the zoning ordinance, and whereas the proposed site plan for the development of a mixed-use senior living facility, and now therefore I move that the Planning Commission approve the site plan application number 2023-19-0129, and the requested waivers and modifications to permit the construction of the mixed-use building contingent upon the applicant resubmitting an updated final site plan and subdivision plat to be reviewed administratively and approved by the planning director that addresses the following. One, sanitary sewer, the applicant will add a note on the site plan that a sanitary sewer Forest Main arrangement needs to be approved before the as-built plan is submitted. And two, development review committee, DRC comments, all remaining DRC staff comments on the third site plan submission shall be addressed as attached, including comprehensive signed plan comments.
Great, thank you, Ms. Friedlander, is there a second?
I'll second.
A second with Mr. Stevens. Mr. Trainer, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Polinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Friedlander?
Yes.
Mr. Krevinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
And Chair Coleman?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion passes.
Great, thank you. And thank you very much. Thank you to staff for all of your hard work on this project, and thank you to the applicant. We look forward to seeing it. All right, we can move on to our next couple of action items, which are our minutes. So your minutes, are any, any changes to the minutes from the meeting on February 19th? No? Clean? All good? A motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes from the 19th.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And Mr. Duncan, great. What about the minutes from March 5th, 2025? Any changes?
Okay.
Okay. Motion to approve?
I can make a motion to approve?
I'll second it.
Okay, so Mr. Krevinsky with the motion, Mr. Polinsky with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Thank you. All right, we have no work session items, so I think we are on to information items. Any Planning Commissioner reports?
I had one that sat in with the AAB, and discussion of both the new site plan for the Econize, Econize, Econize? I'm not sure you pronounce that.
Econize, yeah.
Econize.
Now that I say it out loud, if only ever read it. Discussion similar to our previous discussion about that. They also had an opportunity to look at the, some proposed changes or possible changes to the bowling alley. It looks like there is a new, if not a new owner, like potential new owner.
Bolero is the new owner?
No, they're, well, I don't know.
The Bowl America?
The Bowl America building, but renaming it Lucky Strike? It was not, I didn't know if that's Bolero's, another brand of Bolero, I'm not sure.
It might be, yeah.
But there was some discussion of the signage there, and it was a very insightful discussion of it, and it was, I, I think there, if we're followed by what the AAB had to say, it'd probably go back to the drawing board a little bit on sort of what they were proposing, so.
I think there was, there were some issues with, they wanted to place that sign in a location that we, we needed a little bit of right-of-way for the.
Roundabout.
The roundabout there, and there was a very long exchange about the signage, so interesting.
There was a lack of response, I think.
Yeah, I think, I think, yeah.
Yeah, not sure what's going on there, but it was an interesting discussion.
Okay, thank you. Any other reports, please?
So, the, um, Parks and Rec, uh, Board, um, they are starting to think about the semi-quinsentennial, um, which is the 250th year anniversary, um, of, uh, 1776, and so they are looking at, um, kind of, they're starting to kind of collect ideas of things that this, we've done in the past, maybe for the bicentennial, and some other things to try to get ahead of it so that we're not planning at the last minute, so.
Yeah, that's just next year.
Keep an eye out for some communications coming for that.
Great, thank you. Okay, anything else? All right, uh, then I think that brings us to the Director's Report. Uh, Mr. Zhang?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Board. Uh, we only have three items on the, uh, Director's Report tonight. Uh, the first one is the, um, Commission's Annual Advance, which has been scheduled. Uh, it will be on the, uh, March 26th, Wednesday, as discussed during the last, uh, Planning Commission meeting. Uh, I have the schedule here today. Um, I'll just read it through very quickly. Uh, the good news is that Panera Bread dinner will be provided, so the meeting was started at 6:30, and, uh, first 10 minutes will be introduction on objectives of the meeting. Uh, the second item on the agenda is comprehensive plan status, needed updates, schedule, and priority. That will be the staff presentation, and also followed by a discussion. Uh, hopefully it will be done in 30 minutes. The third item is cottage housing status and post-development reporting. That's also a staff presentation, and then followed by a discussion. Hopefully it will be done in 30 minutes. Uh, number four on the agenda will be 2025 Planning Division work plan and calendar. Uh, of course, the format will be the same, staff presentation and discussion, uh, scheduled for 30 minutes. The last item will be, uh, Planning Commission future work plan interest and priority. Uh, we are lo, we are allocated 45 minutes for this discussion. Uh, the second item, uh, on the Director's Report is Nova Park memo to, uh, Dominion Energy Corporation tree cutting. Uh, this issue has been raised during the, uh, Monday council meeting as well. Uh, actually, they already started cutting. They're going to cut the whole 33 miles of the, uh, WOD trail, and, uh, the first four miles are already started, so the, the impact, eh, 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 they describe as amazing. Basically, they cut down everything. Um, I think, uh.
It's not like brush clearing, it's cutting down entire.
Trees. The, all the trees, because they interfere with the power line.
Pretty much anything that's in the.
Right-of-way.
In the right-of-way.
Yes. Uh, I think, uh, in this memo, uh, the Director, Gilbert, proposed several things. One is to, uh, increase the tree height, the definition, I think Dominion gave, anything cannot be more than 10 feet high. Actually, uh, pretty much leave no trees at all. So, they suggested to increase that to 20 feet. That's in line with the, uh, the national standards of a tree. Uh, they, they also asked for increased, uh, meadow planting, uh, for the pollinator. Uh, they, they believe that's not enough, so they ask for, uh, more trees and shrubs to be planted. And then Nova Park also offered to identify those native trees, which will not be, uh, high enough to interfere with the power line. So, basically, that's the, the summary of that memo. Uh, the last one is the Missing Link update. Uh, I think we have two attachment here. One is the.
Can I ask a quick question about the tree cutting? Is that this summer that they're going to do that? Or have they already started?
No, they already started.
Already started?
Already started, yeah.
They've done it in Vienna.
But they're headed out to Reston, and I think they're.
The first, yeah, first four miles are already being cut.
Yeah.
When, when would they start in Falls Church?
I don't know that we know that.
Oh, okay.
Or if, yeah, we sort of presume that they're going to do the whole trail. They're starting this in Vienna, but I think they're headed west.
That's more of a question, if we'd made, if we'd made the request for 20 feet, did we, did, were, were we too late? Did they already just, like, did they already cut down the tree, like, or they already made a plan to cut down the trees, or?
I don't know.
At least for the four miles, they did, they did cut down everything.
Okay.
I think this memory just suggested, uh, I, I think in the memories, they did much toll.
Okay.
So it's quite recently, like, this week. So, I don't know, um, I don't know the direction they're cutting, you know, but, uh, I think what I heard from Monday, uh, the city council planned to send out some letter, and then maybe they're going to, um, they, they kind of plan to do more than just simply send a letter.
Okay. I was just curious if we had heard back, like, like you said, it was a relatively recent submission. I didn't know if this was one of those things where it gets lost in the mail and then they, lost in the mail, so they just get it done before, uh, they have a chance to respond.
Yeah.
But thanks for the, the information.
Thank you. Uh, the last thing on the report is the Missing Link update. Um, we have two attachments. One is the City Manager's Report. Uh, basically, it's in the attachment, and then, uh, this report give, uh, background information about, uh, what this program is, and then they also provide, uh, evaluation priority. Basically, they divide it into four tiers, and, uh, and then they have also discussed the possible funds, uh, will be available to do this. I think, uh, according to the report, uh, in FY 2026, there are about $650,000 has been allocated for this effort. Uh, the second attachment to this is the, um, DPW, uh, operational report. Basically, it's a six-months update on what they have been done, uh, under this program. Yeah, I think that's the quick summary of those two, uh, memo. With that, if you have any question?
Can I ask, what is probably a dumb question? Um, for the missing links and the sidewalk repairs information, are, do we define sidewalks as square sidewalk things next to people's houses or next to roads, as opposed to, or the big brick ones on Broad Street, as opposed to the entrance and exits for the W and O D, uh, like the ones that get you on and off the bridge going across Broad Street?
Um, they have their four tiers, basically, uh, given the program name is Missing Link, so basically they try to fill the gap.
Okay.
I think the first priority is to, you know, those sidewalk wall had to meet the PRO-WAC and ADA standards. I think that's their first priority. The second priority is that this, if the street without sidewalk, that's the place they want to.
Yeah.
But the ones on Broad Street, that'd be, uh.
Is that considered part?
That would be the streetscape plan, the city streetscape.
There's the, the entrance, and so, next to the bridge that goes next to the car dealership, the FC Auto, and then the one that goes, um, uh, next to the bridge, next to West End Park. There are those, like, entrance and exit ways off the bridge, uh, that are really rough shape. I didn't know they followed, fall into the sidewalk repairs, or if that's a separate W and O D.
I think that's probably like a trail.
I don't know, which group, it's probably, probably a dumb question, but like, just, I.
I know what you mean. It does need to be fixed.
Uh, I just didn't know if it was a, like, is this part of this sidewalk, or it has to be like a official sidewalk? Sidewalk means something specific that is not the W and O D entrance-exit thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess so. It's a sidewalk sidewalk. It's not a linkage to.
It's a walkway on the side of the W and O D, I mean.
Maybe it's passway. Uh, there are some, there are some street, uh, leased here on the, uh.
Yeah, that's why I got my curiosity, was this, the sidewalks repairs, the six-months update. I didn't know if we could get those two things in, in this, but, mm, like you said, it might be part of, something that needs to be solved, uh, with Nova Parks.
Is it this, this sort of area?
Yeah, that area.
Yeah.
It's, it, those are in really rough shape.
These are, like, I think when we, when we're talking sidewalks, we're talking.
Yeah, the things that have the squares.
The things that go in front of people's houses that have the squares, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
This is, I think, is more of a, like, a off, off, um, off-street trail.
I just didn't know if, in terms of budget, it has to come from a, a parks budget or a Nova, it has to come from Nova Parks, or it has to come from the state as opposed to the city?
I don't know, because I don't know if you know how the sort of, like, trail maintenance. I mean, we do have some paved asphalt trails that are periodically updated or maintained. Do you know how that, those deci, those priorities are being made, Mr. Zhang?
Uh, I have no idea, um, but we, we can find out for you next time.
Yeah, sorry, I'm just asking because we happen to be talking about it. It's not a immediate action type of thing.
Okay.
I had a question on the, um, uh, advance, uh, agenda with the cottage housing item. I'm just wondering if, um, there was a staff proposal to, um, kind of upgrade the cottage housing ordinance about five years ago. Uh, it was Carly Aubrey who was the person on staff who developed that, and unfortunately, about the time she left it, the work on that stopped. Uh, it'd be great if you could find out whatever her, uh, legacy, uh.
I, I found it and sent it to, to Gary.
Oh, you did? Okay, great.
Yeah, it was, uh, it was February of 2020, which might be why there was no further discussion.
With COVID coming up, yeah, yeah.
Of the, of the sort of, like, she had, like, five or so different recommendations.
Right.
Four, four different recommendations for.
Correct.
Ways that that ordinance could be changed. So I asked Gary to include it in the materials. Will you post materials for the advance?
Yes, yes.
Good.
Yeah, so if we could.
That's where I was headed.
Yeah, yeah, sorry to interrupt you.
No, 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 that's, that's, you get, we got, we got there.
But yes, I, I found it, I sent it to Gary, and, um, and there's a video, too, if you'd like to watch the discussion. It's interesting. There's a, a different cast of characters in, in, uh, February 2020 on council.
We change.
Including one of our colleagues. So, uh, uh, you sure here, Mr. Duncan? Um, yeah, you can re-watch that video if you want to listen to the, the discussion, uh, you know, there're more, more than just like what's in the staff report.
What was the date, uh?
Um.
Early February of 2020?
Uh, let's see. Will you put the link to that in the, in the agenda materials?
Yeah, I can, I can dig that up and circulate that for folks.
I mean, I, I'm sure we won't get into minut detail on that, but it would be nice to know the context of, uh, what was thought about five years ago, and that may inform our discussion.
Sure.
Yeah, it was, um, 2/3/20, February 3rd, 2020.
Can I, uh, can I ask a question about the advance? So, is, um, when do you think we'll see the advanced material for the advance? Um, will we see your presentations? You said, you, you mentioned a couple times, staff presentations will start off the discussion.
Yes.
Will we see those presentations before the advance?
Tomorrow evening, right? Thursday evening?
Regular posting time, right?
Yeah, um, I'll, eh, we always aim, yeah, for it to, to post a Thursday before a meeting.
Great.
Um, I'll, I'll check in with Gary on where some of those other things are, because we've been, we've been focused on this meeting, uh, or at least I have. But I know Gary's been working on the, um, uh, organizing and ga, gathering the materials for the advance, so I'll check in with him, um, about those, those staff presentations, um, because I know that's, um, maybe a, a separate piece, um, compared to the rest that's on the agenda in terms of what, you know, Gary and I would, would be producing. So we'll, we'll have an answer for you.
And will we have a staff presentation on the cottage housing is, or is, or?
Well, as Mr. Stevens said, the, the expert no longer works here, uh, but I'm sure we can, um, put, put something together, some sort of, uh, informational summary piece in addition to the, the past presentation materials and, and meeting video.
That, that'd be great. Uh, just for the new folks who.
Sure.
Looking at that agenda item and want to get a little background on it.
Yeah, the, the, that February 3rd, 2020 meeting was, was very informative.
Okay.
Um, and you can go back in the archives and you can watch the, watch, I would rec, I would recommend watching the meeting and, and reviewing those materials. I don't think we've had anything el, I couldn't find anything else in the search on cottage housing since then.
Got it.
I mean, there was a lot of discussion on the original ordinance, but that goes back.
Mm-hmm, 2016?
When I started on, well, Planning Commission, it was 2017, I think.
2017.
Yeah.
Got it, got it. Uh, and just, uh, as long as we're talking about staying organized, um, the online agenda starts us at 7:30, and the one you, the hard copy you hit, just handed out, starts us at 6:30.
Mr. Fuller mentioned that there was a typo and.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so the 6:30 is the start time, as long as that works for everybody?
Yeah, it sounds great.
I think that's more appropriate if we're, if we're doing sort of a box dinner.
And the only other comment that I have, having been through a number of these, we didn't call them advances, retreats, um, I think there is a potential for a lot of redundant discussion, uh, between 2025 work plan and calendar, and planning future work plan and interest and priorities. Um, so I think it's just, it's going to be difficult to keep the re, conversation from repeating itself. I think we need to be a little bit careful with facilitating that, so we don't dive, and particularly when you look at the comprehensive plan status and priorities. So, we have at least three agenda items that are going to talk about planning priorities, and we have to be a little bit careful about becoming redundant in that conversation, so. Otherwise, I think it's a great agenda, um, who you.
Yeah.
Based on, uh, the last meeting that we had.
Yeah, thank you very much. I, I believe, uh, 2025, most of the work program are already in place. I think the discussion is basically give us some update, and then what do we try to do with that? And then, uh, future work, basically, it's to try to identify the future priorities, basically.
Got it.
Yeah.
So what's on our wish list that staff is not currently working on, but that we would like to dir, you know, be able to request council to direct them to work on? It's good to remember that we can't ask staff necessarily to do anything, but council can, so we can, we can lobby council for our priorities.
So we might be primarily on the receive mode on the 2025, um, just in terms of listening?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna be, that'll be a, a listening session. And we had a good readout on that, I think it was in November.
Right, last year, I think.
Yeah, late in November, so it would be great to have an update on how things are going, especially with the new staff, and, and just a refresher on everything. I know, I know there were some things that were sort of like, we'll do these if we have the resources, um, and there were some important things on that list. I can't remember exactly what, what was in that, um, immediate wish list at the moment. But yeah.
Well, I just remember one city council meeting where, uh, Mr. Stoddard very specifically said, every year, city council gives me 70 priorities. I have the ability to do 30 priorities.
Right.
I make the decision because nobody else is making that decision.
Right.
About what 30 priorities to work on.
Yes.
So.
Yeah. I think we're not in that situation anymore, if I'm, if I'm correct. I think we have now, like, sort of broad, city council has, um, broader priorities, and, and it's really up to staff to decide, okay, what are the actual projects that we're going to execute on? That's my understanding. If that's not the case, please correct me.
I, I think so. They, they now give us, like, a strategic, you know, um, priority, and then we just follow those, not very specifically project anymore. They just give you broader priority, I think. But of course, whatever the program we have, we'll have to discuss with them, get the future, I mean, specific guidance on it.
Mm-hmm. Did you have another comment, Mr. Stevens?
Nope, that's all.
Okay. Anything from you, Mr. Duncan? I don't want to forget about you.
No, I don't think so. That covers most of what I'm interested in, uh, hearing a little discussion next week about the, um, situations like, uh, on Lee Street, where T zones are basically beginning to, um, you know, see development one, one row in from Broad Street. I don't think that's probably going to be the only one like that, and I'm, I'm just looking at the agenda and trying to figure where that discussion comes in, not so much that specific application, but just the concept of tapering down from Broad Street into the residential neighborhoods, uh, is seen differently by some than others. To some, tapering down, you know, commercially used, uh, townhouses, single-family homes. To others, it's commercially used, boom, single-family homes, and that's, that's going to be a point of some contention in, uh, in the future, I think, is assuming that we continue to attract development and desire to attract development.
That might be a good thing to, I, I mean, I wonder if we can squeeze it in in number five, or in number two, the comprehensive plan status. I don't, I don't know. Um, I know the land use chapter is, is probably due for an update. I don't know where that is on the priority list for staff, um, or us. is on the priority list for staff, or us, but that could be something, that's where we, I think, set the zoning map and future land use map. It would be helpful, I think, maybe to have a little bit of background on the, on the future land use map, and where, when, when and where, when and how that, those decisions, those, those sort of parcels, it's a little inconsistent across those, cross streets, like how far, how many parcels in it goes, you know, the, the, the future T parcels, sometimes it's just one, sometimes it's two, so hard to know why those decisions were made. It would be nice to have a little more context.
And also just when, you know, when was that future land use map done that included the T zones?
When was it originally created?
Yeah.
In that form? Yeah, I don't, I don't know that we have a history, a history of, could use the Wayback Machine, maybe?
I think I've seen one with date, they have dates on the bottom of them, and so.
Yeah.
There's one that I printed out, and that has a date of 2015 on it that shows that on it, and then there's the recent one that was signed on.
2023 or something, right?
2022, yeah, September of 2022, so it's not like it's this immediate change, I mean, it's been out.
It's been a while.
It's been a long time. I think it might even be as old as 2006. I think that might have been a date that the, the resident who wrote with some concerns about the potential future rezoning of those parcels, she cited 2006, but I, I don't.
Well, this one is dated March of 2023, is it?
Yeah, it's just, that was the last time it was updated, so we, it's, it's.
Gets updated when there's a special exception, or, you know, some type of an application that gets acted on.
All this is good conversation, and then I would like to hear more about it next week with a little foundation and, yeah, information, I guess, that I don't have at hand right now, or do I recollect what I said five years ago, or whenever it was. Yes, often, you know, the discussion goes on and circles around and whatever, until some sort of development application comes in, and then it's like, oh, that focuses our attention on the fact that all the things that you just talked about are not necessarily all known, or consistent, or updated, or whatever, so something, something forces action, it would be nice to get out in front of that action forcing event. Anyway, thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Duncan. So the advance will be in Dogwood over here, so it's a little bit more informal for our new members, which is nice, more of a conversation, so I'm looking forward to it. One request, I, I think I emailed Mr. Fuller, but I believe I'm on the agenda to present the annual report to city council on the 14th of April, but I'm going to be out of town, so if we could push that a little, a little later. I think the idea is that after our discussion of our, our hopes and dreams for our future priorities, we would update the last page of our annual report, and then I would be presenting those priorities to council. Does that sound right?
It does, sounds right to me.
Yeah, so just not the 14th, I'll be in Seattle.
Sure.
I like the idea of calling it the Hopes and Dreams Session rather than the Advance.
Our Hopes and Dreams.
Hopes and Dreams, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so that's it on the agenda. Did you want to talk about the look ahead, Mr. Polinsky?
Yeah, I just wanted to talk through the schedule, just to understand a little bit, so since I'm relatively new to the Planning Commission, I just wanted to make sure I understood sort of the future schedule with the works, with the advance next week. Looks like we're proposing to cancel the scheduled meeting on the 2nd.
Yes, yes, sir. April 2nd has been canceled.
Okay, and then?
The next one will be April 16.
Okay.
We have two items tentatively right now. One is the Econizer Site Plan Final Consideration and Action. The second will be Affordable Living Policy Walk Session.
Is the reason that we don't go two weeks later because there's five weeks in April?
We always meet on the 1st and 3rd Wednesday of the month.
Not just every other week?
Yeah.
Got it, okay.
Yeah. You're off the hook. Good head, for that fifth Wednesday.
Can't do bedtime that night.
Next meeting after that, after April 16 will be May 7th. We have one item, Broad and Washington Eastman Vacation Action. That one had to go to the council first, and then come back to the Planning Commission. After May 7, the next meeting will be June 4th. We have only one thing, it's Affordable Living Policy Action Plan. That's all for now.
Okay, I'm sure there will be more. Thank you, Mr. Zhang.
Thank you.
Any other discussion, questions? If not, I think we can call it a night. Thank you all. My return. Thank you, Mr. Duncan.
Thank you, full search, forget it. I see a homicide.
Safe travels home, Mr. Duncan.
Travel safely.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's great.